Call the meeting to order six thirty-two.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Present.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Here.
Mr. Scopora?
Here.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Here.
Mr. Forish?
Here.
Mayor Griffin?
Present.
All present. Can we have a motion for approval of the minutes for December twelfth, two thousand and eleven meeting?
Madam Mayor, I move that the minutes of the December twelfth, two thousand and eleven meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk while they will be available for the reading and inspection to anyone.
Second please.
Madam Mayor, I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of fiscal department reports paid bills for month of December two thousand and eleven. We have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolfert, second.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Boldmarry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. It's time for citizen reports. Anybody who wants to talk, please give your name and your address. Some people get five, remember Jim, you get four.
You want me to take four?
You might get three soon.
Huh?
Maybe three. All right, no one wants to ... okay. Can we have reports? Okay, board authority?
Madam Mayor, I have a report from the library. I serve as the city representative to the Adams Memorial Library, and I just wanted to make council aware that it appears that Unity Township will be cutting its funding to the Adams Memorial Library for the fiscal year of two thousand and twelve. We are looking at the impact that that's going to have on the services we provide. So I'll keep you updated as we have further information.
Anyone else? All right, Marina?
I spoke with Joe White. They're planning on starting this project sometime around the end of February first of March in that area. They already have some equipment and stuff locked up over there. So they're anxious to get this thing moving as we are getting it. So that's where we ... we have a meeting the twenty-fourth.
Marty, does the completion date remain ... the projected completion date remain the same?
Uh, I haven't heard of any changes, but that's a question I'll ask them next week, the twenty-fourth.
And in this meeting, is this regarding any changes in the project?
No. It's just our quarterly meeting. Every quarter, the fourth Tuesday, we meet.
Have the plans yet been reviewed with the contractors on this regarding any proposed changes?
No, they've signed off on Gibson Thomas. There's a whole ... I just signed off on some stuff. It's about that thick. But the contractor has signed it. We've signed off, and it's ready to move along.
Alex, is the financing, is that all in place?
It will close on January eighteenth.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Charlie?
Alex, where does the money go that you get? What kind?
Initially, we're going to deposit into the capital account. The amount of money that will be used to pay off for two thousand and two, that will be escrowed and be paid approximately February first. So between January eighteenth and February first, that money will be parked for a short period of time and earn a bit of interest. We're looking at options right now with PNC Bank. That's where our capital funds are currently held in reserve, and we're exploring options of keeping some of it in different terms of CDs as it relates to the payment schedule for the contractor. So that three million dollar balance will be at PNC Bank, and again, in a different number of CDs at different rates and terms.
And you have the authority to sign off on them?
When we do the closing, we'll make sure that all the people who are here need to be here, like the mayor, on January ...
I mean the checks and various items, the withdrawals.
It is our money, and then we'll be working with the parking authority to make sure the contractor's paid in time and fashion.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, we're having a little few problems with the Unity Township too, but it's all about our sewage five thirty-seven plan. And they don't agree, their engineers don't agree with our engineers on certain aspects. But fortunately, I think DER is going to make the decision, so it's not going to be drastic anyhow. That's about all I have.
Charlie, who are your engineers?
Gibson Thomas.
And who are their engineers?
I don't know. Some are just came in and changed Gibson Thomas. There's probably friction there, you know, because they were big players. See, the five thirty-seven act tells you which way the sewage is going to go from Gary to everywhere to go into the plant. Evidently, what they want to do is build their own plant for maybe sixteen to twenty million dollars, which I don't think is feasible. They want to divert four model run into, enlarge their plant, burn it into that plant. I don't think DER is going to go with it, so I don't think it can go too far. But it is a little problem on the road. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Department reports, Joe? And John? Ann?
Excuse me, Barb. This is regarding the new police cars. Are they on the road yet?
No, both new cars were taken up to Johnstown today. One should be in service by the end of the week. The other one should be in service by the end of next week.
Thank you.
Pretty spickety?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on our agenda is under administration of finance. Department, it is a motion to change council agenda sessions previously advertised to the last Monday of the month. And I believe in your packet, I tried to present to council the difference of going to the last Monday of the month as opposed to the way we currently have. Six months out of twelve, we have twenty days between the agenda session. Oh, I'm sorry.
You didn't give that to me.
I'm sorry. Okay, I thought I'd given this to Barb. The long and the short of it is that in six months, we have twenty days between the agenda session and the council, the regular meeting like tonight. In the other six months, we have thirteen days. As your solicitor, I'm going to ask you to think about this because when we come to a time where we have ordinances that require ten days of advertising, cutting that down to thirteen days becomes a little dicey. Obviously, from my standpoint, the more days we have in between, if there are ordinances to be advertised, then there's ample time to do it. For example, on a ten-day ordinance, the tenth day would run on the Sunday before the meeting. So you start counting backwards, then you have to have the ordinance down to the bulletin by eleven o'clock the previous day. So you've got eleven out of the thirteen days that you have to meet in order to advertise. And when Christmas or a holiday like that falls in there, that can cause a little bit of chaos too. If council desires, certainly you can make the last Monday of the month the agenda session, but if you leave it as it is, at least for six of the months, it gives us more than, it gives me more than ample time to advertise ordinance where they become necessary. But the motion would read to make a work session on the last day of the month.
We have a motion?
I so move.
Second? Wait a second? Second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Mrs. Wolfert, questions?
Is it the last day of the month?
The last month, the last month, yeah. As I said, half of the year it's that way anyway. The other half of the year.
Will you kindly enumerate those days when you think you will have insufficient time? Or could you let us know if there's insufficient time if we do propose that it be held the last Monday of the month?
Well, I would have to say that to council that depending what ordinance may come up, not every ordinance is accounted for.
All right, well, could you inform us that perhaps the agenda sessions would be a week earlier when you have that type of an ordinance?
Well, the problem is, I don't know until we get to the agenda session sometimes what we're planning to do. So we're already at the agenda session, and then I'd have to say, well, we can't ...
So you can't do it in fourteen days?
We can't do it on this, meaning we have to go to the next week.
Madam Mayor, I share the same concerns as Mr. Kelly. I propose that we leave it as it has been established.
Any other? Controlling? Any other questions, discussion?
It's a voice vote.
Yeah, I just want to know if anybody else ... All right, all in favor of the motion to change the date of the agenda work session from the fourth Monday to the last Monday of the month? All opposed?
Aye.
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 Oh, you missed that. You missed the vote for it.
You missed the vote for it, but ... He wants to be a yes, ma'am. One yes. Okay.
The next item on the agenda is also ...
There's also a motion, and we just require a voice vote. And the motion reads, I move to authorize the city solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance amending the city competitive bidding ordinance to establish the amount of eighteen thousand five hundred dollars as the threshold requiring competitive bids. And I mentioned this at the agenda session. The governor has signed into law an act which now increases the competitive bidding amount up to eighteen thousand five hundred. We are currently at ten thousand dollars. It would be a voice vote.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Scopora, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish? Any questions, discussions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I oppose the raising this limit. I think we should keep the limit, the threshold, at ten thousand dollars just for the sake of transparency. This appears to be a typical move for Republican governor and Republican legislature to raise the threshold, therefore deny competitive bidding and the passing out of favor, so to speak.
How about if we keep that out of things?
I don't think I was out of line. I just made reference to the fact that, that's my opinion.
I understand that Mr. Boldmarry, you're against the governor's action, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And you also intimated that perhaps there would be some chicanery if it went to eighteen thousand five hundred.
It's possible, yes, it's possible.
Are you aware of the requirements for bidding under eighteen thousand five hundred? I think you have to seek three proposals.
Yes, I was going to mention that. Between, it used to be between four and ten thousand, you would seek three proposals. Anything under four thousand, you did not have to. Now, you have to seek three proposals between, or basically between ten and eighteen thousand. Okay? So you still have to get three proposals if it's under eighteen.
And they have to remain with the manager almost, the S keeper written copy of it.
Oh, yeah. But it's only competitive bidding where specifications and bids are advertised that would now be at the eighteen thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, votes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carried, two.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is an ordinance. It's been duly advertised, and it is our annual tax ordinance. And it reads as follows, fixing the tax rate for general city purposes and other purposes for fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and twelve, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, being enacted and ordained, section one, that a tax, being the same as hereby levied in all real property within the city of Latrobe, subject to taxation for city purposes for the fiscal year two thousand and twelve, beginning January one, two thousand and twelve, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand and twelve. For general city purposes, a tax rate in the sum of twenty-one point three oh mils on each dollar of assessed valuation at one hundred percent market value assessed valuation be Adams Memorial Library, a tax rate in the sum of point two zero mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, levied in accordance with the vote of the electorate of Latrobe Borough at a special election in November nineteen fifty-three, see for other purposes for general government protection of persons or property, health and sanitation, highway, special services, and other miscellaneous services, section two. That the total tax rate hereby levied for all the city purposes as set forth in section one being the same is hereby fixed at twenty-one point five zero mils, section three, that any ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith being the same are hereby repealed, section four, that the within ordinance shall take effect immediately upon the publication of the opposing act with notice of passage of the same, enacted and ordained. The motion would be to enact the ordinance as referred by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I so move.
Mr. Boldmarry, second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Jimonangelo? Any questions, discussion? Questions?
This represents no increase in knowledge, correct?
Yes. Yes, all right. This is ordinance two thousand and twelve, one. Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Third of seven yes. Motion carry.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is our annual ordinance to establish wages hours infringed benefits for positions of the city of Latrobe for the fiscal year two thousand and twelve, as required by the Home Rule Charter, now therefore being enacted and ordained. Section one states that for the position of city manager and director of tax revenue, the salary is set forth on exhibit A, which is attached here to, and the hours infringed benefits as set forth on exhibit B, which is a copy of the city manager's contract on file at the office of the city secretary, being the same or hereby established for fiscal year two thousand and twelve. Section two, it's the same language for the position of director of police department and chief of police. The salary is set forth on exhibit A, and the hours infringed benefits is set forth on exhibit C, which is a copy of the chief of police's contract on file at the office of the city secretary. Section three is the same language for the position of director of administration and finance. Again, the salary set forth on exhibit A and the hours infringed benefits as set forth on exhibit D, which is a copy of the contract for the office of director of administration and finance. Section four, that the salaries infringed benefits for all other non-collective bargaining unit personnel are hereby established for fiscal year two thousand and twelve and are set forth on exhibit A attached. The next section sets forth that the wages and or infringed benefits for all non-uniform collective bargaining unit personnel for year, fiscal year two thousand and twelve, are established by the collective bargaining agreement entered into between Astine and the city of Latrobe for a term from January one, two thousand and eleven through December thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen. Section six states that the wages infringed benefits for uniform collective bargaining unit personnel for the fiscal year two thousand and twelve are established by the collective bargaining agreement between the uniform bargaining agent and the city of Latrobe. A copy of both agreements are on file with the city secretary and are available for review by any interested person. Section seven, that this ordinance hereby reapproves and ratifies the wages hours infringed benefits currently set forth in both of the collective bargaining agreements. Section eight, that any or all other ordinances or resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. And section nine, that this ordinance shall take effect on the date of publication of the opposing act with notice of passage, enacted and ordained this date. The motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scopora? Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
My question is, I was looking at John Brazilli, director of fire department and fire chief. Has that salary increased, or has it been the same? For how many years have we had him at forty-eight hundred? And I also see that his life insurance amount is seventy-five hundred, and this essentially is a very dangerous job that he undertakes. Could there be a review of the salary? Is there ... when was the last time that we ...
It's been some years.
Pardon?
It's been many years. It's been a while since it was raised. I think it was thirty-six hundred, and then it went up to forty-eight. Sorry. It was thirty-six hundred before, and it went up to forty-eight hundred, but that was years ago. I can't even remember what year it was.
Well, this is my thirteenth year, so I think probably at least eight years, I would guess, eight, nine years.
One time it was raised.
Madam Mayor, I wonder if we could review that, see if the life insurance wouldn't be increased, and also the salary. But I'd be favored voting for this ordinance as of now.
Yeah. We were talking a little bit about this this afternoon anyways. Any other questions or discussion? This is ordinance two thousand and twelve, two. Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Third of seven yes. Motion carry.
The next item of business is under the police department, and it is a resolution authorizing the elimination of certain permit parking areas. The resolution reads, amending chapter two fifty-six, schedule two fifty-six fifty-one, parking prohibited at all times, now therefore be resolved, section one. That section two, fifty-six dash fifty-four, schedule eight, permit parking, being the same, is hereby amended to delete permit parking on the following streets and highways. The highway is Northview Avenue, both sides of the street, from Marie Road to Joanne Drive. The next one is West First Avenue, both sides of the street, from Joanne Drive to Barbara Road. The next one is West Second Avenue, north side, from Joanne Drive to Garfield Road. Following that is West Second Avenue, south side, from Barbara Road to Joanne Drive. And the last one is Carolyn Avenue, on both sides, from Joanne Drive to Marie Road. Section two, that all other provisions of chapter two fifty-six of the code of ordinances not amended or changed herein shall remain in full force and effect resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Jimonangelo? Questions, discussion?
Who's using that permit parking now? Hospital employees? Is that permit parking over there? Or is it residence?
Permit parking on those streets originated from people going to the Latrobe hospital, both employees and visitors. But over the years, you've seen that Latrobe hospitals went from over a three-hundred-bed hospital down to a one-hundred. And in speaking with the hospital, they assure me that every employee there now has his own off-street parking. And I've talked to some of the residents, they have no problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion?
It just might be pointed out that this is really cost savings for the Department of Public Works Streets group. They don't have to replace refurbished signs, and as, you know, opportunity arises, we'll remove those signs and, again, save money.
Anybody else? Barb? This is resolution two thousand and twelve, four. Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Third of seven yes. Motion carry.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item of business is under the fire department, and every two years after election by the fire department, the city is required to appoint the fire chief. The resolution reads, appointing fire chief, director of the fire department, now therefore be resolved, section one, that upon election by the city of Latrobe Fire Department and upon recommendation of the city manager, John Brazilli, being the same as hereby appointed fire chief slash director of the fire department of the city of Latrobe, section two, that the within resolution shall become effective immediately, resolved in council. This date, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jimonangelo, second?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish? Questions, discussion?
I'm assuming that there was an election, and John, you won the election.
Yes, the results. You're stuck with me.
This is resolution two thousand and twelve, five.
I'll be gentle, Ken.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Third of seven yes. Motion carry. Can we finish business?
Madam Mayor, members of council, we have certain appointments to boards, authorities, and commissions, and under our charter, the mayor would make an appointment, which is then voted upon by council. I'll go down the list. There are several boards where there are no applicants, although there may be vacancies, and I will go down those boards and commissions where there are applicants. The first is the Latrobe Municipal Authority, and we actually have two recommendations, one from the dairy township supervisors, the other from the unity township supervisors. Unity township, Dairy has one, my unity township.
Yeah, by.
There's none of them here.
No, I mean, I was just ...
Oh, LMA.
Right. By them.
Okay. I stand corrected. One is the representative of Dairy Township.
Right.
The other is an incumbent seeking reappointment. Okay, so the first one would be the Dairy Township representative, and the resolution would read, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, you have to make the nomination.
First one is ...
The incumbent, okay, go ahead.
All right, I recommend Thomas Casey.
The resolution would read, appointing member to Latrobe Municipal Authority, now therefore be resolved, and Tom Casey, being is hereby appointed, is a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority, set term to expire January thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, and the motion would be to adopt the resolution.
Mr. Forish, a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Mrs. Wolfert, second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Jimonangelo? All, any questions? Discussion? Barb? This is resolution two thousand and twelve, six. Mr. Jim?
I abstain.
This is a whisper for the LMA.
Mr. Jimonangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Boldmarry?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolfert?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Third of six, yes. Motion carry. Yes. Dairy, right, Madam Mayor. Right. Okay.
Madam Mayor, the next one will be for the Dairy Township representative to the Latrobe Municipal Authority.
All right, I recommend Ellen Keith. Ellen Harvey, Ellen Keith.
The resolution would read appointing member to the Latrobe Municipal Authority, now therefore be resolved, that Ellen Keith, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority, said term to expire January thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution.
Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jimonangelo, second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry, any questions, discussion? Okay, Mark?
This is resolution two thousand twelve seven. Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mr. Scapora.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
I abstain, solicitor for the authority.
Mr. Jimonangelo.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
There's six yes.
Motion, Karen.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next vacancy is for one on the zoning hearing board. It would be for a five-year term through January thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen.
May I recommend Jim Holler? Did you guys get an email? Jim Holler?
The resolution would read appointing member to the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board, and now therefore be resolved that James Holler, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Zoning Hearing Board, said term to expire January thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jimonangelo, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Scapora, any questions or discussion? Questions? Okay, Mark?
This is resolution two thousand twelve eight. Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mr. Scapora.
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
There's seven yes.
Motion, Karen.
Can I ask you a question, Mayor? Do we still have vacancies then on the zoning hearing board? How many? Because I can't, just, we still have two.
And then aldermen.
Huh?
And aldermen, if you ever get an alderman.
All right? Mr. Keller?
The next appointment, Madam Mayor, members of council, is for the Industrial Development Authority. It's a one vacancy for a five-year term.
I nominate Thomas Sylvester.
The resolution reads appointing member to the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority, now therefore be resolved that Thomas Sylvester, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Industrial Development Authority, said term to expire January thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen. The motion would be to adopt the resolution.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Scapora, second?
Second.
Mrs. Wolford, any questions, discussion? Okay, Mark?
This is resolution two thousand twelve nine. Mr. Jimonangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry.
Yes.
Mr. Scapora.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
There's seven yes.
Motion, Karen.
The next board is the Latrobe Parking Authority, and it is a five-year term. And it is the incumbent, Martin Malina.
I recommend Martin Malina.
The resolution would read appointing member to the Latrobe Municipal Authority, now therefore be, or Latrobe Parking Authority, now therefore be resolved that Martin Malina, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Parking Authority, said term to expire January thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution.
Have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jimonangelo, second?
I second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry, any questions, discussion? Okay, Mark?
This is resolution two thousand twelve ten. Mr. Baldmarry.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
Yes.
Mr. Scapora.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
There's seven yes.
Motion, Karen.
The last item, or the last appointment, is for the liaison from Latrobe City Council to the Latrobe Unity Youngstown Park and Recreation Commission. It is a three-year term to expire January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen.
I nominate councilwoman, Mrs. Wolford.
The motion or the resolution would read appointing member to Latrobe Unity Youngstown Parks and Recreation Commission, now therefore be resolved, section one, that Rosemary Wolford, being is hereby appointed as the city council member to the Latrobe Unity Youngstown Parks and Recreation Commission, said term to expire January thirty-one, two thousand and fifteen, resolved in council this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Jimonangelo, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldmarry, questions, discussion? Okay, Mark?
This is resolution two thousand twelve eleven. Mr. Scapora.
Yes.
Mr. Jim.
Yes.
Mr. Forish.
Yes.
Mr. Jimonangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Baldmarry.
Yes.
Mrs. Wolford.
I abstain.
Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
There's six yes, one abstain.
Motion, Karen.
That's all of the applicants we have.
Madam Mayor, council, my manager's report stands as written. Just want to call your attention to it. First of all, this is the first meeting of the new year and I must remind the council that it really begins with vision and mission. That's copied from the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan. It's very important to stay focused on the mission of the city as a safe, livable, vibrant, sustainable community. It provides a high quality of life for present residents and future citizens and visitors. These are the guiding premises, really, quite frankly, for me coming to work and what I want to attempt to do. The highlight in the manager's report is budget overview for two thousand and eleven. For the entire year two thousand and eleven, January one through December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, revenue and expenses were both above the budgeted amounts, seventeen point one and seven point four percent respectively. Our total revenue was five point four seven three million dollars, while the total expenses for two thousand and eleven were a little over five million. Last year, at the end of our two thousand and ten, general fund balance was about a hundred and sixty-six thousand, while at the end of this past year, December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, it stood at nearly six hundred thousand. Gross revenue at the transfer station, finished out or totaled at one million, one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and sixty-four thou, or sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents, Joe. If you notice on page two, there's pie charts to represent the two thousand and eleven budget situation as ended December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. The act said, the transfer station held sanitation to almost represent nearly forty percent of the city's revenue, while real estate taxes represented twenty-six percent of the city's revenue. Act five-eleven, local taxes, which include the local service tax as well as the wage and income tax, is about nineteen percent. And you can see the other revenues as noted in the pie chart. For expenses, the expenses, again, as you might expect, sanitation, solid waste was about twenty-six percent. It was quite busy there. Police department, twenty-one percent. And the public employee benefits, which covers all of our benefits, both in the police and administration, sanitation, streets, public works department, again, about sixteen percent. And so you can see that pie chart as well. Again, we just want to note to council, we anticipate a strong revenue year again at the transfer station. As recently as Friday, Jonah and I are talking to adjusters at Erie Insurance. They anticipate that this year will be busy again with the roofs. But the downside of all that is, a number of people are having worked on now that they would have been having done in future years. So in a sense, the city's getting paid sooner than later. So we must take note of that. We expect in two thousand and thirteen that that fiscal year revenue situation will probably be closer to two thousand and ten numbers. You know, as it kind of rebounds back to a normal flow. Again, the transfer station is about a five hundred and fifty thousand gross revenue operation. In the past year, it's about one million, one hundred and ten thousand. So it gives you an idea, it will come back to somewhat of a normal amount. As also in the manager's report, I should note, besides the bond issuance and working with Solicitor Kelly and our bond counsel to do that, I spent some time working with Joe and the folks who deal with our meters in the town to think about pay system options. As many of you know, we have about seven hundred and fifty meters in the town. About six hundred of those meters are mechanical, they're mechanized, they're spring-loaded. In order to adjust any rates, they'll need to be replaced. But more importantly, or need to be each handled by hand, if you will, and sent away to be recalibrated. But more importantly, they're really no longer being serviced. The parts for those older meters, quite frankly, are being harder to come by. And we're cannibalizing as much as we can, existing meters that keep the ones in operation. So it's likely when we do adjust the rates this year to help take care of paying for the bonds for the parking rehabilitation, parking decks, we're going to look at getting new meters. And right now, we're investigating different pay options for those and a lot of times being spent looking at those various options. We've been spending time as well with the Community College. As many of you know, they are acquiring the properties and many of those have closed. However, there are still three re properties remaining that Community College is still interested in acquiring and there are negotiations going on for those three properties. I think it's, really should be priority of council in this city to work with Community College and do what we can to acquire those properties on behalf, not necessarily us, but to see that Community College is able to acquire them. The difference would be stunning as it relates to the approach of crossing over the bridge and seeing that entire block being developed by the Community College as opposed to the last remaining properties being left as they are and then the Community College being built next to it. Very much like any of these other issues, we welcome council to come over to my office or invite me to your office and we can go over some of those in detail. Lastly, for the manager's report, we did submit a grant to the state for the early intervention plan, which will be our financial wellness plan, if you will, for the next five or so years. We did record another video blog, which is on latrobTV.com as well as linked from the county, the city's website. And you should note in the manager's report that you have a summary of the two thousand and eleven budget, which is also including the two thousand and ten actual, two thousand and eleven budget and two thousand and eleven year-to-date, which is as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, as well as the past budget that you approved last month for two thousand and twelve. And again, more than welcome council input for those. If you have any questions, please come by the office and we can certainly make time to discuss this. Are there any questions?
I have one. Since we went to free shuttle, we getting any more service on the Latrobe shuttle?
I'm glad you noted that. As of January second, there are no barriers to riding the shuttle. You may simply park at the Memorial Stadium or the shuttle without showing any passes because it's free. It'll pick you up in the morning and drop you off in the evening because the shuttle's designed for employees only. To answer your question, I'm really not sure. It's kind of an odd week. Last week, it's hard to judge that, people coming out for vacations. But we really need to get the word out that the shuttle's now free. If we can move thirty or so people out of the parking lots, that are daytime employees, taking the meters up for about nine hours a day and having to park down the stadium, it will result in a difference. To be honest with you, I know we're not losing a lot, but Joe and I talking to the parking contractor for the garage, we're going to lose a couple spaces, at least on weld-in, if not a few more, depending on what stages of work they have to do there. So it's incumbent upon employers of the downtown to take advantage of the free shuttle. For them, it's a savings of the monthly pass, which is thirty dollars a month. The shuttle will run free until the garage is open or until it's really feasible. In other words, if we don't have users, we won't continue to offer that service. To date, we've raised about almost four thousand dollars to offset the cost of the shuttle.
I just want to thank you for your manager's reports that you give us. Very, very much appreciated.